Good morning. We're going to call the Scott County Board of Commissioners meeting to order for September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Would you all please rise for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning again. It's September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. This is the Scott County Board of Commissioners meeting. First, we're going to do our Regional Rail Authority meeting. You all have the minutes of that meeting in your packets from September twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, of approval?
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, that is to adopt Resolution Number RR two zero two three dash zero zero one, establishing a final levy of zero dollars for twenty twenty-four for the Scott County Regional Rail Authority for the purpose of inclusion in the proposed property tax statements. Is there a motion to that effect? There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And there's a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There's no other business, so we will adjourn this meeting, and we will move on to our regular Scott County Board of Commissioners meeting again for September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. I did not see any amendments to the agenda, and you received your minutes in the packets. Are there any additions or deletions or corrections to that or those said minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And there is a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Recognition of Interested Citizens, limited to five minutes per person or subject. If somebody would like to speak, come on up. You have five minutes. I know there's a teacher. Do you want to say words about what people?
Five minutes.
Oh, okay. All right. If you just want to say.
Just fine.
Yeah, that's.
Dragging me up here, but thank you, Barb.
She's twisting from back there.
So my name is Jody Stone, and I am the Human Services CAPS instructor for Shakopee High School, and we have a partnership with Scott County, and we have a class that meets here every day from now until almost the end of January, and then at that point that will be placed into internships within Scott County and the city of Shakopee. Every other Thursday, we're over to the city of Shakopee because we have a joint partnership with the two government agencies. The intention is to get professional experience for students that are interested in a variety of fields, going from law and attorneys to social services, mental health, and they're getting a dual credit from St. Cloud State as well. So pretty cool program, and we appreciate you having us here and the partnership, and we look forward to continue working with you.
All right. Thank you, and thank you all for showing up today. We sure appreciate it, and we will see you here working in Scott County in the next five or so years or sooner. And how anyone else for recognition of Interested Citizens? Okay? With that, we're going to move to number five, five point one, receive information on Scott County Delivers topic, child welfare prevention. I see Chris Harder is here to kick us off.
Good morning. Here's this morning, we had a subgroup of our prevention work. We have, I think, what is a really good problem. We have used resources in a way that has allowed us to expand prevention, and as we started planning for this conversation today, it seemed like bringing all of prevention was just not going to be focused or purposeful enough. And so this is a subgroup of the prevention work that the county is involved in, and today we're going to talk with staff from the county and from the community about the FRCs and the two programs that we have addressing school attendance, both our truancy and our ed neglect programs. And we have a brand-new program with some circle resolution model that we're going to talk about as well. So it's a little more focused today than some of our Scott County delivers, but I think it's important to understand that it's part of that bigger picture, and we'll be coming back to in January of twenty twenty-four to talk specifically about the other prevention programs directed at early literacy, childhood screenings, those kinds of issues. So with that introduction, I will ask the folks on the facilitator group to introduce themselves, then we'll ask you all to introduce yourselves and just what your role is, and then we'll get started.
Brad Davis, Director of Planning and Resource Management.
Cindy Geis, Director of Community Services.
Jake Grusing, Director of Transformation Enterprise Services.
I'm Crystal Bojatsko, the Family Resource Center Coordinator.
Lisa Welter, the founder of the Catalasso Group.
Deb Bodensteiner with Treehouse Prevention and Diversion Services.
Paula Frisk, I'm with St. David's Center for Child and Family Development and I oversee the past program.
And I'm Steve Brown. I supervise our truancy programs, children's mental health, and chemical dependency.
And I'm Nikki Holberg, and I supervise our prevention services. Thank you. All right. Jake, you want to start us off?
Sure.
Thanks.
So as I was reading through the packet, one of the things that popped into my head was government does a pretty good job of inoculating its systems against any kind of change, and the systems stay the same, the structures stay the same, and this is really a different approach from a non-expert perspective. So for the, if you identify as a government person, for the government people, how has that been going? And what, like, what friction have you encountered along the way? Because you're trying to do something that's a little bit different. And then for the non-government people, and I know it says a little bit in here, but I'd just like love for everybody to get to hear from you, what makes you want to be a part of this, and what so far is exciting to you?
I think for me, as the prevention supervisor, and also like my history in child protection, it's really been quite refreshing to be able to offer families a community approach to attendance issues. I think it provides them with both like the prevention piece of it to help families kind of work through what they need prior to an educational neglect report being made, and also with that educational neglect response, which I think the government response can sometimes be really scary for families, and it also puts somewhat of a guard up for families of not wanting to respond for fear of what that outcome might be. So I think the community response has been really helpful for families.
Some of the rub, I think you asked that question as well, though I think the rub or the challenge is not so much, is our providers are experts in the, our contractor providers are experts in their services. Been doing them for a long time, and we've been doing county business, and so the challenge is how do we, like, they're providing the truancy services to a mandated, like, county response, and how do they do it in a way that is, like, we keep saying, Treehouse, be Treehouse? And then the other hand, we're saying, but it's a county response. So there's this, like, give and take, or this rub, like, be free, be innovative, and yet you've got to stay within the statutes. It's like, where's that, where's that balance?
I also think the shift from county response to community response is amazing, and families aren't quite understanding the shift, and so we're being seen as the county when we come in, and so there's a lot of work to really help them understand how this is a different response. There's still some defensiveness and resistance when we come in. We have found that once we get in and get to know the family a little bit, if they allow us in, then we can develop some really great relationships with families, but we are running into a little bit of resistance and hesitancy in the beginning with many families.
From Treehouse's perspective, it's been, I don't know, government is scary for our families. I agree with Nikki there, but we seem to have a safer, more gentler approach to truancy and to prevention services, and I think that that's important, too. And yes, there is sometimes difficulty in trying to do what we do as we do it and not become a government agency, so the split is still being worked on.
I lead the Catalasso Group, and I provide support out in the community with families alongside child protection referrals, and I just want to say, my goodness, it has been such a delight to spend time with families, but also such a strong partnership with our county leaders. I would say it all boils down to relationship, and as I watch Suzanne Artsen lead, it's trickling down to the frontline staff as I'm working with families at the direct line, and so I've lovingly referred to her as really the Mother Teresa of Scott County. And that is true. It is true. The frontline staff, our partnership has been just a gift, and I share that with families, that this is really a way to empower you, and the county loves you and wants to empower you as parents to be all the things that you want to be, and so it's really just a privilege to be here with all of you.
And being a part of the county community prevention response team and the Family Resource Center coordinator, the Family Resource Centers really have a unique role in building that bridge between the community services and all of these wonderful community-based partners and programs, and really leveraging the resources that are available for families and making sure that families know what's out there and available to them and know how to access the programs and know that there are these really great supports available.
I have a question. As I'm listening to you talk, what I'm wondering is, are there any obstacles in the way that prevents you from sharing what you know and you know and all of your various talents? And as you work with folks, how readily available can you share amongst the entire group that information to look kind of like at this person wholly, in the family wholly, and say, how can we best serve them? Is there any obstacles from a legislative perspective or data privacy perspective that doesn't allow you to be as open and free with the information you know across all of your various programs?
I could probably jump in from Family Resource Center perspective. It's really driven by that individual, by the community member who's coming to us. So they are, you know, sharing their interests and their needs, and they sign a basic release to make contact with individual organizations, but again, it's driven by them, so it is a little less challenging, I guess, than some of the other more mandated services and programs.
Yeah, I think our model would want to come from, support that in terms of just coming from a position of respect and transparency with the family in terms of, here's the reason why we wouldn't want to share the information, it's from a helpful standpoint, and so we would, we would, we would follow our consent, like, we would ask for consent. In terms of just general program information, I mean, I think we try to support each other's success in that, like, what are we doing or what are they doing that's been helpful? And I think there's lots of sharing in terms of programmatic or approach standpoint, for sure.
While we're talking about Family Resource Centers, I mean, can we go to page fourteen, please? And so for the students that are here, every month, we come and have a conversation with our county commissioners about a specific program or topic area, and the idea is to look at the data that supports that program, and what do we learn from our data that says, hey, this program's going pretty well? And what do we see in the data that says, hey, that might be something we want to grow or develop or strengthen? So the data slides that you are going to see are specific to these program areas that we're talking about this morning, okay? Okay. So this is Family Resource Center data, and Crystal, I wonder if you can talk just about, I think the bars show attendance at the centers. Can you talk about that outreach line? I think that's a piece that maybe isn't quite as intuitive.
Oh, sure. The outreach is really reflecting any of the community engagement that we are doing from month to month, so that is things like tonight, we're going to the Shakopee Community Assistance Close Down the Streets event, so we count the number of people that we're engaging with at those types of events, or the Kids' Day celebrations, or just anywhere where kids and families are that we might share more information about Family Resource Centers or other community services.
Do you get any information about, like, as a result of those outreach events, are you, do people come into the FRC and say, oh, I met with someone there? Like, are those effective in helping people connect to the service?
It certainly is, yeah. We do see families coming into the center for the first time after that outreach, and that direct invitation from our Family Resource Center staff to say, hey, you know, so nice to meet you, please come in.
Okay. And do you have targets set? Does your team have any targets around outreach events, or how are you planning for, because that takes some resource to get people out and attending those events and staffing those events?
Yeah, it certainly does. We, you know, through communicating with our partners, try to have a good awareness of what some of the key events are in the community. Like, today, just got an invitation from CAP Agency for their trunk-or-treat event happening in October.
Yeah.
And do have to make choices of, because our staff capacity is somewhat limited, and we do need to focus our efforts up in the Family Resource Centers. But, you know, we just track that throughout the year. There's going to be an admin flow to this, too. Certainly, there's a lot more events that happen through the summer months, might slow down in the winter, but.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Staying on Family Resource Center, page sixteen, shows the engagement outcomes that have occurred, and it looks like it's resource navigation programming and family development. Which ones do you really want to see grow over the next year or so? Which of those outcomes do you track most closely and want to make sure you know when it's going up or down?
Yeah. I think the one that I really want to bring attention to is our resource navigation piece because that is the one-on-one communication and work with families by either the Family Resource Center staff or our cultural navigation staff, and the numbers that are reflected are unique families per month. So a family might come in August and then again in September, but they're only counted one time. They may visit five times throughout the month, but we're only counting them once. So we'd like to see that. There certainly was a big spike in August as we were moving back into the school year, and families were looking to support with that navigation, but you could see that it was pretty steady in the sixties in May, June, July. Like, we want to make sure that that is remaining consistent and even growing. Same true with the programs and classes. Those numbers were reflective of some of the bigger events that we held, like a back-to-school resource fair, but we are looking to build up our participation in our more regular parenting and family programs as well. And then the family development.
Yeah, I think we'd also like to see that family development piece continue to grow so that families are aware, especially when in crisis or just have ongoing needs, that they can continue to come back to the Family Resource Center for support.
Oh.
No, you go ahead.
Okay. Can we go to the previous slide, fifteen? Looking at race and ethnicity for Family Resource Center participants, I think two questions about this. One, is that, is that what you expected? Good, bad, not judgment on it, just it is what it is? And then what do you think the impact of the cultural navigators has been on driving the results here?
I think that this, to me, is a little bit better probably than what we expected. I think it's kind of an indication that our BIPOC families in Scott County are reaching out to the Family Resource Center because they feel, you know, hopefully safe and able to get immediate help. I think that certainly our cultural navigation services has helped families feel comfortable to come in and know that they can talk with someone immediately and get help that they might need. I think that it'll also be interesting to see our twenty twenty-three data around this, which I think will probably be more diverse because we've really seen probably an increase in Hispanic families especially with our partnerships with Micasa and the CAP Agency, so.
Can I follow a question with that? When we look at that slide and when you look at your caseloads and the people that you serve and then know that, what is the need out there by race? How does the data that you see here with the folks that are coming into the Family Resource Center, how does that compare to what you know your caseloads are? Is it, you know, if we have forty-two percent white folks coming into the Family Resource Center, is that comparative to what you're seeing as a case? Or is there communities that are probably not coming that need to have a little bit more service, so hopefully we can get them engaged to come?
Yeah, I don't think we have those specific numbers for, like, our family development worker. I would say that when I meet with Alicia, who's our family development worker, she is bilingual, and I think probably the majority of her families are Spanish-speaking, so I think that that rate is even higher, which I think is an indication of families feeling like they can walk side by side with someone to continue to get the resources and services they need.
Do you have other, other people on your staff that are like other people of different races, and would that be helpful to get some of these other communities engaged if there's a need?
I think it could certainly be helpful. I mean, our staff is really pretty small. We have one family development worker, and we have Crystal, who's our Family Resource Center coordinator. Other than that, we have our PISO worker who sometimes is able to step in, and also Caitlin, who's our Together We Can coordinator, will step in.
If I can add one thing to the risk piece, I think if we know that our defense services, BIPOC folks are overrepresented in those, in child protection, in truancy, and ed neglect, in all of those spaces, I think it's really promising that they're also overrepresented in these prevention services because that means we're targeting the right folks, right? And hopefully, we're making those outcomes or we're making that impact on the front end.
Nikki, what is the status of the program evaluation for FRC?
So the status, certainly, I think we are really grateful to have a database starting to work on that in October and hopefully be running in the beginning of January with that. Right now, we are hand-counting and assessing all that data in a spreadsheet and really looking at how many of our families are directly connected to services like economic assistance and some of those things, and then are doing kind of a sample of families from twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three about the impact of the, potentially the impact of the Family Resource Center, whether or not they are involved in defense services prior to participation or after participation in the Family Resource Center.
Okay. And, you know, we had, I'm going to just do another question, sorry. We had a number of conversations over the last few weeks as we talk about the budget, and one of the questions that we kicked around a little bit was about whether or not the, from our economic assistance perspective, like, we know that many people are coming to the Family Resource Centers because they don't have insurance or the funding or, like, kind of that basic needs piece. And so do you have the right Scott County people coming in to meet with community members? Do we have the right people doing those sessions? Or are there gaps? Are there people from Scott County that you would like to see in the FRCs more?
The support from Scott County departments has been really wonderful. We do have monthly, actually twice a month, visits with the economic assistance workers, housing, child support, employment and training, and I hope I didn't forget anyone, but people have been making appointments and walking in to meet with the Scott County providers for that individualized support, and there's been a really good response there. And we've even seen, I know one of the questions is about two gen, two generational supports, so meeting the needs of parents and children. We've seen grandparents come in with questions of how to better support their adult children and their grandchildren, so asking questions of how do you navigate the eligibility for benefit programs, and what does housing look like? I want to help them move to Scott County. You know, where does my grandchild go to daycare? So certainly having that direct connection with Scott County at departments is really very valuable.
Are there gaps?
Well, walking through the paperwork, it certainly is helping them meet their concrete needs, so basic needs for food, for healthcare, and we are finding ways to try to meet those needs. So with the food needs, we have a boxed meal available for that day, and then try to make connections to the food shelves that are in the community, and then work through the application or the eligibility process for SNAP. But that continues to be a big need.
Right. I think any potential gaps could be, like, disability services for children. I think we'd like to, like, do some future work with disabilities case management for education around kids. I think also we would like to do some kinship work in the future at the Family Resource Center. We do see a lot of families that are caring for family members, so I think that's one aspect that we would like to grow. Yeah. And I think I just lost my train of thought there, but those two, I think, primarily, oh, and also I think it's going to be interesting come winter to look at the mental health piece for individuals and potentially families that we do see sometimes kind of hanging around and being at the transit stations, so I think potentially there could be a gap for, like, potentially adult mental health, maybe presence there at times for some outreach.
Okay. Thank you. Are there FRC questions, or should we move to? Yeah?
Go ahead.
And then could you take us to slide twenty-three, please? So this is about the truancy, truancy services. So Steve, I wonder if you could just give a brief description of, we have truancy services provided by Treehouse, we have truancy services provided by the county. Can you just talk about that split before we look at the data?
Yeah, just look at this slide here first. So this slide you're looking at is accepted truancy referrals for diversion. So those, those are referrals made by the school that meets statutory definition, having seven unexcused days of school. The schools implement a support plan. The support is that engage, have the schools engage the students. If that plan does not work over the course, given it a fair amount of time, if that does not work, then the school is able to make a referral to our prevention services, our new services, restored circles and our path prevention. And if those are not working, then it goes to the next year, then the schools can make that referral to the county for more formal diversion services, which is more case management services.
Okay.
And these are, so once it hits, the formal county referral comes to the county attorney's office, we receive those as diversion. Those are the accepted truancy referrals.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So one of the challenges that was identified in the narrative was that the schools are confused about how to make referrals to the programs. What's the status of that today, and then what are, what are we doing? Or what do you need from the rest of us to help alleviate that confusion and provide some clarity?
Well, historically, we've done, started our truancy or school year kickoff, so we've invited all the schools to conference room, shared, you know, statutory kind of language around, here's what the expectations of schools, here's supports available. This year, because there's, we've decided to do an individual, so we're going out to the schools personally, inviting our providers with, and walking through that and answering questions, so it's a much more personalized approach. I'll let them speak as if they're hearing anything differently in terms of how it's going.
Well, I think that that's been good because it's been, we're sitting there together, unified in helping prevent and help with truancy issues. So just that, I think, settled a lot, and then we had, I know Steve had put together kind of a cheat sheet, you would say, to help the schools identify the process, so they need to do this first, and then this, and then this, and it was kind of laid out in front of them with all of us present to answer questions and help with that, so I think that was very important.
Yeah.
I would, I would just say on our end with the elementary-age children, we've been meeting more directly with teachers and deans to explain. We developed a little flow chart that's easy to understand around attendance needs and where to refer, really highlighting the prevention and the support piece to make the social workers feel more comfortable with making those referrals early on, and we've had some really great response already this year.
I would also add that it's creating a sense of listening sessions where we, as providers, are able to listen to the articulated needs, their pain points, and pivoting, and so an example of this has been learning where a lot of these referrals are coming from, and my organization and the volunteers have been brainstorming, how can we go and meet those needs onsite at the school rather than asking students to come to FRC? If they're there already, let's catch them there. And so I think it's creating a lot of creativity, but also meeting a felt need that the schools are able to articulate to us in person. that the schools are able to articulate to us in person.
I'm wondering if there's a noticeable increase already this school year with attendance and truancy. As a parent of a high school student here in Shakopee, we received an email yesterday about the importance of attendance and how there'll be different actions taken if your student continues to be absent. And I don't recall getting that kind of message from the school district in the past. So is there something going on right now that is noticeable?
I think the prevention services themselves are helping a lot in letting them know what that is, that they can actually refer a student to prevention within three days of unexcused absences. And, and that's, that's very helpful to get them at the start of the school year. I have to share that this summer, we did outreach all summer with students that were potential truancy students. And so we provided outreach once, twice a week, communication with the student all summer long. And I believe Sarah, our diversion worker, had 12 students all summer long that she worked with and all of them attended school and are still in school. So I think that's a, that's a testimony to that prevention and outreach service.
Yeah, I think it's been a lot of the communication with the schools and really communicating the importance of intervention early on so that schools have that information as well. It's a lot easier, you know, to, to address those concerns with the family when a child has missed two days of school rather than when they've missed 22 days of school. So I think it's been a lot of work around that. We also, I think, are planning to have like a community event regarding the importance of school attendance sometime in the near future, hopefully to help like the community understand the importance of school attendance.
Are there underlying themes with these families whose children are truant? When you're talking with the families, an underlying root issue that causes them to think school is not important, and how do you address that?
Yeah, I don't know if there's one or even a short list of common themes. I mean, you see, and I think Nikki referred to it, there's surprisingly a number of grandparents who are raising kids, single parents. And so you see mostly where there's just family hardship. Families are struggling. You got a parent who's off working and a kid who's, you know, they gotta take off before school starts and they cross their fingers, maybe a phone call or text, go to school. And so they only have so many resources to kind of, to make that happen. You've got kids who are, you know, if there's COVID, I mean, I think the national stats are that COVID doubled the truancy. So that long period of time, my experience is the longer kids are out of school, the more difficult it is to get them back into school. There's lots of community events and lots of just social tensions. And so there's just, just kids going to school don't feel safe. They don't feel connected, they don't feel like they belong. And a lot of kids are falling behind. And so when they go to school, they feel like, why try? And so a lot of kids just, I mean, there's, we see a lot of apathy, kids kind of just given up, like there's no hope. And so that's why it's really important to have like a kinder message to kind of meet them where they're at versus you must, you, like the court, the force, the county, the government. We've been doing this for a long time, same, same, same response, same stats. And so doing something different is really important.
So with the change where, you know, we, I listened to the legislature thinking about, they may call the special session because there's confusion around your public safety officer within the schools. And some of the cities have decided that they weren't going to have that compliment in the schools. You talked a little bit about kids feeling safe in school. What type of impact do you think the absence of that officer in the school will have on your attendance? Is that one cause for them to skip and say, I'm not going there because it's not a safe place?
Well, that's a crystal ball question. I don't know that I have any insight to that. I, I know that when we meet with schools, we hear this, how schools are struggling. They will define them as in-school truants, those kids that go into the building and refuse to go to a class. And they don't know what to do with those students. Some of those students are, do have behavioral and emotional problems. And so they don't have the staff to like attend to them and to like give them the time that they need to get them to this or that class. And so is there an impact? Sure, I think the resource officers are supportive to the schools. I think they know those students. So when we go into school, it's really, we, we understand the struggle. We, we want a partnership, it's a collaboration, and those run in. So you don't have to call the county to get a, a response, right? You can call, we've got community providers who, you can make that call directly to the provider at as, as few as three unexcused absences and get a supportive response.
Devin, Lisa, we have been talking about, obviously, getting kids to attend school is, is our primary outcome, right? But we have also been talking about, are there other indicators of success for these kids? Like what else might we measure beyond simply school attendance? Because, right, we want them to attend school, we want them to be academically successful. Like we want more than just their bodies in the school, although that's a good start. Do you have ideas about that? Like what else, and the kids that you have worked with, what else would be indicators for you of success?
I think we found success for the family as a whole is asking for and accepting help. Just that has, has been successful. Many of these families have felt isolated and alone and, or haven't allowed help to come in in the past. And so that's been a measure of success in our minds as well. Helping the parent and child support that relationship and help the parent feel confident in supporting their child to get to school. A lot of times, well, we talked about mental health as being one of the issues for the attendance. And it's both on the parent end and on the child end, there's a lot of anxiety right now. And oftentimes, the parent doesn't have the bandwidth or the energy when a child resists going to school to support them to get there. And so we found it some success in really supporting that parent-child relationship for them to feel comfortable with setting limits and thinking about when, when do I push a little bit? I, I imagine any parents have that experience of when do I push when they say they're sick? And when do I allow them to stay home? So really being open and having those conversations with them about that.
I would say, in the cases that I've worked with, it's tied to conflict resolution. How does a family work through a conversation where there's differences in opinion, right? And working through that in a manner where the parent is able to stay engaged with the youth, but also come to some level of agreement that everybody's winning. And, and that's really where my team comes in alongside of that two-generation approach alongside the schools. But I see the win if we can get parents, youth and schools on board and have healthy conflict resolution within that process so that all voices feel heard, they're respected, they're honored, they're represented at the table, and we can come to some sort of an agreement together so that it sustains.
Thank you.
Page 11, I believe. This is the graph showing the children in out-of-home placement over the past decade. And what struck me, I guess, is just how much that line fluctuates from year to year. And it's hard to really glean any trend happening on this data. And I'm just wondering what, what you see in this data, if, if you're seeing a positive or negative outcome here in, in these numbers? Or is the fluctuation correlate with other things happening throughout these years? Or just how can you kind of explain this, this trend line?
You stumped us.
I do think, and maybe Suzanne can help, but I do think that where we see the, the high number in 2017, 2018 is that's really when the governor's task force commissioned, you know, some changes in child protection, which I think made, you know, all counties be a little bit more, probably less lenient on leaving kids in home and placing kids in foster care at an earlier, at an earlier rate. And I think since then, we've kind of seen the downturn a little bit. I do think overall, typically, our numbers for out-of-home placements are somewhat small. And so larger sibling groups can really kind of skew that line. But I guess that would be my thought.
And these represent all children in placement for all reasons. Just for clarification purposes, we don't generally place a child for truancy. We do have requests to do that. Now, if the child has mental health needs such that they qualify for that level of care, then we would screen it and, and then get a mental health diagnosis, recommendations. And so we'd go through another process to do that. In terms of children's mental health, there's lots of changes in terms of residential treatment that in some ways kind of tighten the screws a little bit in terms of making sure that this, this removal of the child in a residential treatment is needed. And if, so the Families First initiative really requires us, if there, if there's another less restrictive, i.e. foster home, grandparents or uncle that can meet that child's needs, then we would forego residential treatment and support that placement. If that's helpful.
What is, what is the need versus the availability when it comes to foster care and people being willing to take on a foster child? What are some of the biggest challenges with, with families, entertaining it or not? And what is your current need for fa, foster?
It's the older adolescents. I can speak for children's mental health. I mean, it's those children who have emotional and behavioral challenges. And so you have a lot of foster parents who are working, families as well, and that need for supervision, to be home when to go home from school or to be there to get them off to school. So those would be some of those challenges.
A larger sort of system, I was just gonna say, certainly, we have a, a need for foster care of really for all ages. To keep in mind that need for foster care really represents our deep end. And so as we look at the children in out-of-home placement, certainly, the one piece from a trend perspective is we see the high point of 2018-ish, which Nikki already mentioned, is connected to the governor's task force and some substantial changes in the system at that point. I think we, we, we don't have causation, but 2018 also is the timeline that we really started to have intentional conversations around prevention and the creation of prevention services. So we believe it potentially has some influence in what we're seeing now. But there's also just general, I think, societal factors. Certainly, early 2000, we saw meth and we saw then increases in child protection. So we try to watch what those trends are and then how can we respond as a system?
Evan, can you go to the previous slide, page 10? So this one, I, I think similar to the slide we were just looking at, shows what at least a non-expert might see as a, a trend, that those bars are going down. What, for us, for Scott County as a data-driven organization, what has this meant for our investments? Where, where are we putting, has it, has it resulted in a change in how we're investing public dollars in these programs? And if the trend continues, what might we expect to see in terms of where we're putting our resources?
Well, I think we have diverted some money from our out-of-home placement budget this year to help support our prevention programs. I think that, that we are hopeful that like we can continue to see that downturn in our assessments and that, that we would turn around and make that investment in prevention, whether that's additional child welfare work or what it looks like. I think we would hope that we would divert those services to prevention services for families.
I think also, you know, to piggyback, I don't know if this is on or not, but we're just gonna pretend, yeah. To piggyback on what Suzanne was just talking about is, you know, the, the folks here, like the resources that are at this table right here are representing sort of that, that already, that movement that has already happened upstream. And while we can't say there's a direct cause and effect relationship that is occurring with these numbers, there are a million things that we're already doing internally to kind of start these conversations and to redirect some of our resources. So those are conversations, oh, there we go. Those are conversations around what does child welfare work look like versus child protection work? So rather than the deep end system, how are we getting more upstream for things like, for example, runaway assessments, right? Or we've talked a little bit about how do we get at the 15-day drop kids? So kids who are dropped from the schools and nowhere to be found, right? How do we locate them? And how do we do a little bit more on that front end so that we're really reaching out and trying to get at those young people before they end up down here? And so we're already sort of redirecting some of our staff time and resources to get more at that as our deep end child protection numbers have gone down a little bit.
Can you, can you make a correlation between the number of kids who end up either in a truancy or, or, or subject to child mental treatment that end up in the criminal justice system as they get to be adulthood, after they get to age of 18? Do you have any tracking from children you're working from and then where they end up?
Yeah, I think it's a great question. Do we have specific county data? No, really, once the county services end, then like our ability to track, certainly, I think there's national information that would suggest, right? A kid who isn't going to school potentially is at high risk for school dropout, potential other high-risk behaviors, chemical health, mental health, criminal justice. But we don't have specific county data.
One of the strengths identified in the narrative is around, it says that there are currently 23 volunteers registered for roles to support F R C and Together We Can. So I'm wondering if you can speak more specifically to the Family Resource Centers and the volunteer, what do the volunteer numbers look like? And what's the plan to expand volunteers in the F R C?
Yeah, I think that that's certainly like our goal for the coming year. We have had a lot of interest in volunteers for the Family Resource Center. That is also kind of a task staffing-wise, to be able to sort through some of those things, reach out to those individuals and really be planful about how they're gonna consistently be volunteers and what those roles would look like. So certainly, over the next year, we'd like to move forward with, working with Cara at the volunteer system, implementing Better Impact Database at our Family Resource Center to kind of take a look at how we can implement those volunteers consistently in our programs, whether that's running classes or hosting open hours or any of those roles.
All right, I want to ask another question. So you have the Child Wellbeing Continuum, Evan, I think that's on page two in the narrative. My assumption is there's, there are things happening, even on the prevention side. There are things happening in these children's lives with their families before we get in touch with them. And then we have our interaction with them. And there are some things that are happening after the, we've, our experience, our relationship with them has maybe ended and we think they're, they're doing better and they move on. What, what do you need going forward? So we're, we're at the begin, we're still at the beginning. Suzanne said that this work started really in earnest in 2018, which is now five years ago, right? And you're maybe seeing, can't make a real strong correlation yet, but you're seeing some possible connection with the work you're doing and the trends in the data. What, what else do you need? Like we have a few partners here and you have many more who are showing up at the F R C that you're working with. But as you think about building out that full spectrum and that full continuum of support, and I'm really thinking more in terms of like, I don't, fish isn't at the table today. Are there other community groups, faith groups, nonprofits that might be, maybe they're listening? What, what can they do and how can they get connected to support your work? Because you're doing so much wonderful work on your own, but there's clearly so much more that has to be done. So how can others connect to this work if they're interested?
Well, I think if they're interested, they can certainly contact like me or Crystal. And we like would welcome any service that we, you know, would, would work with directly or indirectly at the Family Resource Center to provide help to families. I think that when we talk about like, what do we need? I think one of the things is really that establishment of the Family Resource Center, those services and resources, like it's, it's still fairly new. And we want families in Scott County to consistently know we are going to be there, Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays and Fridays, so that they can continue to come, reach out for help. I think that with having a new program, it's sometimes very difficult for families to think, well, when are they gonna close or when is it not gonna be there? So I think that's a piece of really that stability for families. I think that we have built a pretty strong base of services for parenting, for father's programming, for, you know, our, our prevention truancy programs, for Treehouse, all of those services. So I think that that's something that we want to continue to, to have available for families on a consistent basis. I think also that like for me, I would like to do some more work with deep end services, like case managers who have families that are already involved in deep end services. And how do we connect them to the Family Resource Center? So that when that case is closed, they're still available to the closed, they're still available to, you know, when something goes wrong next or they're in crisis next, like how can they reach out for help rather than letting it get to a point where it's too far again? So I think those are some of the things that we see as potential needs.
That was a good answer to a really poorly asked question. Maybe Suzanne has more.
Well, I was also going to say, we talk about sort of our prevention work starting in 18. That was sort of the early conversation, right? Family Resource Centers opened August of 21, so we are just really at two years. And so I think part of it is continue, like how do we engage community to make sure, A, that the message is out there that help exists and help exists in different ways than just government? We have so many nonprofit community organizations. And so how do we continue to build that message together around the importance of prevention for getting help, I think from building out a continuing continuing to look at culturally specific resources for our community? And I think how we leverage the information that we are getting from our Parent Advisory Council, like right, our Parent Advisory Council should help inform what are the needs over time within our community around services? And that, I think, our experience with the Parent Advisory Council or PAC is really new and we're just learning sort of how do we co-create, how do we share power with community to help them inform where we need to go? So I think some of it is the, we've built a lot in two years and so how do we sort of continue the course and then do better partnering with community to hear what they continue to need?
And I will just briefly add, I think that when we started planning for this Scott County Delivers, we really did have some intentional conversations about we have so many partners, like we can't bring them all to the table because there are, there are really like nearly three dozen organizations and different units that that participate in putting this together.
So I have to applaud you guys on your innovation. I just, I think that this bringing all you together and all have this common goal of we just want to help these families and these kids. I was intrigued by a term, someone who hasn't been really talked about yet, and I know I've heard Suzanne and I have had a couple of conversations on it. But you talk about, there was a statement made about father programming. Talk to us or tell us more about where, what you see getting into this new program, how that will invite maybe greater participation and what you're looking to see as an as a goal with the father programming type or whatever the the father program that you're working on.
Well, I think a couple of different things, like so we're working with Damascus Way, who provides Destiny Dads, which is fathers' parenting and support to families in Scott County. And any Scott County dad can participate in that. I think we've tried to make an intentional effort for dads that are involved in child protection or court services to really sort through like what their needs are and how they can kind of work their own individual plan to be a more present father. We also have that program in the jail, which we've seen a lot of participation in the jail and the jail has really reached out to us several times to talk about how impactful that has been. And I think one of the things that that we've thought about moving forward is with our diversion and prevention data for past is we really have probably about 70% of families that are single households. And so how can we really kind of work with our father's program to make an impact in regards to those families and the increase in school attendance?
The other thing I would add on, really since, well, since I started in Scott County, there's been an identified gap around father-specific programming. So from a child welfare, child protection, DHS used to come in, we do service reviews to sort of evaluate our system, and that was a known service gap. And then fast forward to 2018, we engaged community again to talk about what was strong and supportive and what were gaps in services. And community said very loudly around, we don't have anything specific to dads. And so when you talk about potentially engagement around parenting and you, the person you're going to is a mom, how is that the same and how is that different when you're a dad? And so really trying to identify, again, what are those gaps and how do we reach sort of all parents in the best way possible? So that really led to the development of the dads' programming.
So we're coming close to the end of the time, so if you guys have additional questions, I wanted to ask my last one. So I said at the beginning of this that we were, that part of your team is coming back in January to talk about early literacy. But one of the, one of the pieces of work that we have been, I think, pushing really hard on is early childhood screenings. And so I'm wondering, like not from Treehouse, because, well, maybe, maybe you're talking about siblings, I guess. But how, do you have a plan across these prevention programs where everybody's driving in the same way to get kids screened? Like, is that a consistent practice across your fields? And what does that look like?
So at the Family Resource Center, like we are talking to every family that comes in that has a child that has not yet enrolled in kindergarten or at the age of three and on about screening and the importance of screening. We're also working with, well, we've worked with Prior Lake School District, but also Shakopee District around kind of what we can do information-wise so that if families are worried about doing those screenings or scared, like how can we provide some information about that? We're also looking to work with some of our cultural navigators. I know that, you know, I attended a FISH meeting, I think it was probably about a month ago, where a Somali mom really talked about like how difficult the school system is to navigate. So working with our Community Resource Center and also ISARU to kind of reach out to families to help them understand the importance and really what it's for. So those are some of the things I think that we're doing.
What's your confidence that all these people at this table are talking to every family that, about screening?
Well, I think it's, I think that for me, I'm pretty confident that we are here. I think that I certainly would hope case managers are talking to families too, and I'm pretty confident that they are talking to families with children of younger ages. I think St. David's is an organization that works with the whole family so that they're also helping to meet needs of younger children in the household and talking about the importance of the screenings and along with attendance.
Okay. All right. You guys too? We're all talking about screenings?
We work with seventh grade through 12th grades, so a lot of times we don't have the ability to screen the whole family.
Right.
But if there's an opportunity and they're in the household, because our workers go right into the house and see the environment that that student's living in and talk to the parents and it's a knocking on doors type of service, so more personal and gentler way of doing it.
Okay, thanks. Last questions from the facilitators?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Wefenbry.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here. I try and follow all your work all the time and talk to others about it. It was fun to be in Alexandria last week and present with with other folks about Family Resource Centers. So thank you. Two things I heard today that I'm most excited about, and you probably know this, about the first one is the volunteers. I think in looking at, when I've looked at the Family Resource Centers across the country, so much of their success has has been dependent on getting those volunteers in. I understand it's hard and I thank you for that and thank you for taking the time to do it right, but I'm very excited about opening that opportunity and making it a true opportunity for community members to contribute, to help their neighbors, help their friends, really having it be a good experience. I know there'll be bumps and, you know, sometimes volunteers are there for a long time and sometimes not for a long time and that's just the nature of the work, but very excited about that. Second, the other thing I heard today that I had been starting to talk to people about is just the integration and getting disability services more involved at the Family Resource Center, just because in some of the statistics I'm seeing and just firsthand knowledge of family, friends and neighbors, it's really hard having a child who lives with a serious disability, very, very hard. And there are a lot of barriers and a lot more challenges. So I think that in thinking about our mission and goals with this this prevention work, really important to see how we can integrate that throughout Family Resource Center and our work. So those were the two things that I I wanted to highlight. Again, the the truancy and education work, awesome. I'm excited for these partners and what's going on. It's fun to, I drop off meals every now and then, fun to see the teens who are there and sometimes I just kind of watch as they're coming in and it's great. So very excited about this work. Thank you for taking these risks and doing it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ulrich.
Well, I have something I'm wondering about, you know, and you've got a tremendous work here you're doing and and programs and data and things in place to help you, but I'm thinking about the individual nature of the problem. In other words, if you've got a child that is truant or there's a constellation of reasons why that could be, and I mean, it could be systemic, it could be long-term, it could be all of a sudden. And I just wonder about that, how you how you analyze that or uncover that individual's need or reasons for where they're at, you know? And that's a difficult task, I'm sure, but it's very individualized, I would think. And I just wonder how you approach this on an individual person's basis, you know?
It's a good question. I mean, a lot of our workers are trained to do assessments and so at least from the county standpoint, we are, when you look at the research, there's what we call pull factors and push factors. And kids can be missing school for push factors. It could be really, I'm embarrassed, I or I get bullied or I've got a conflict with a teacher or whatever that might be, more of a push factor. Like, let's address the school, let's help them kind of resolve that, let's get the kid back in school. Usually, there's multiple, right? So that might be one of the more driving forces. Then there's push factors, push, or the pull factors might be, we have younger kids, we need a kid who would be home babysitting, might be more individual, like I, I'm anxious, I'm depressed, I want to sleep, I want to stay at home. And so we really try to assess as many of the contributing factors as possible. I mean, and the best practice is to address as many of those contributing factors as possible, engage the family around that. Our model is really high support, high engagement and effective use of authority, kind of what leverage do we have to kind of like nudge them along and do it with them? And so our model before is how do we like push these kids back into school? I mean, really, from a government standpoint, how do we use our government like leverage? And so now we're, that's not, it's not worked. And so how do we listen? How do we engage? And how do we like, tell us, what are your worries? What gets in the way of school? What are the barriers? And then really try to like dial that down and say, okay, what's one small thing that we can do to help support you to move towards that? And so one of the questions was, how do you, how do you measure success? And seat time is, you know, get the kid back in school, but if the kid doesn't have well-being and if still it's depressed and but and it's not achieving in school, have we really achieved anything just by having them in that seat and they're now they're no longer on excused absences? So we really look at like, many of these families were not involved in services before. They didn't know what depression is, they didn't know the services were available. And so it's like, success could be, there's services in place now. Now they're addressing the factors which are barriers to this kid going to school. They're involved in mental health, they're involved in family therapy, they're addressing the housing issues, they're maybe getting some support through FISH. So that's our approach.
I can give a really tangible explanation too alongside what Steve has shared. We bring homemade chocolate chip cookies. Works all the time with youth, so they'll eat all 12, right? But we sit down in a safe but serendipitous environment where a youth can show up and talk about the things that matter to them. And we'll arrange a series of questions around their own leadership responsibilities. How can they live up to their name? Maybe they don't like their name. Well, what's their nickname that they go by? And we help just kind of foster and uncover the potential in that youth, but also being really kind and gentle in the needs that they're articulating. Oftentimes, we find that youth aren't even telling their parents necessarily what's going on if there's a bullying situation happening. But for some reason, chocolate chip cookies and a comfortable environment and markers to write out the plan that they want to make for their lives is working. And so just to affirm what Steve is doing and what we're doing out in the field, I think we're going to see some cool stories happen this next year.
I think one of the questions was the, you know, the reasons for kids missing school. The common theme probably would be complex trauma, which is really a, can be multiple losses over a period of time. So you referred to, it could be one event, but most of these kids, it's not one event. Those are the kids that eventually get back to school. We identify it pretty quickly, help get the supports in place and and they feel supported and and they're back in school. But with, for many of these kids, it's it's complex trauma. It's multiple moves from school to school. It's, you know, losing their their apartment and having to move to a different school district. It's poverty, it's low income, it's maybe the parent well-being is is struggling, a single parent who, you know, mom is working hard and doing everything she can. And I think the bandwidth is a is a big deal. So really trying to approach it from a traumas-informed lens, that most of these families come with great hardships. And when schools usually call the family, it's usually, your kid's missing, it's usually a bad report. And so how do we, how do we flip the script on that? Like, hey, your kid's struggling, we want to support, you want to support your success, we want to get services in place for you. And I think that's the the approach that we're trying to take. And that's really a more of a cultural approach in terms of school, having those conversations with school, having those conversations with our interdepartmental partners and then having those conversations with our with our partners here.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Beer.
Just wanted to revisit the idea of the volunteers, nonprofits, partners. And the prayer is that we don't have to worry about this with this group, and I think that's where we're at. I just hope that as we move forward on this journey together, did someone say three dozen or 30 or, I mean, close enough, right? A lot of people coming to the party and probably more. And that can be a lot to manage, I have to believe, it's got to be. And sometimes we have this government, I think, air leverage that that doesn't become, and I don't think it will, and I'm not saying it is to this group, but just just something to be aware of, that we're, continue to be willing to be willing to whatever that looks like, for whatever partners that bring expertise to the table and and we let them be their, what they do best in in this FRC group. So I'm excited where we already are and where I think we will be. So I said this is not, I don't think, happening, but as we move and maybe we get more than 30, who knows? Maybe we get a whole bunch, but if they can have that expertise, because I think it was a setup here, that individual relationship is so important, but so messy and it takes a long time that we can't just put them all in a room and fix everything and move on the way. So hats off to what is happening and I look forward to continued success and reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brennan.
Thank you. I really appreciate that you're here and talking about the the things that you're doing. On page 14, it talks about Shakopee and the numbers at the FRC. And in August, it jumped up considerably. What do you think are are the reasons for that? Is it outreach? Is it events? Is it programming? What happened? Or or is people going back to school and have stress about that or what do you think it is?
I do think it's a combination of things, including having some months being established in our new space in Shakopee, which is really welcoming and is getting a lot of word-of-mouth referrals from families. So people are starting to know where we are. The other is the summer outreach. And then I think also just the back-to-school time is busy and it's a good kind of reset of like, all right, we got to take care of business for families. And they were coming to Family Resource Centers for support in that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, thank you all for coming today. High school students, thank you. Hope you guys learned something today, so. With that, we are going to move on to our consent agenda. These items are deemed non-controversial and normally pass in one motion. And I'm going a little slow because I'm going to wait till there's a little bit of a migration going on. Okay. So 6.1, Adopt Resolution Number 2023-14, approving a three-year agreement between the County of Scott and the Minnesota Public Employees Association, Sheriff, Non-L licensed Essential, 911 Dispatches, and rescinding Resolution Number 2019-188. 6.2, Adopt Resolution Number 2023-125, acknowledging receipt and acceptance of gifts to Scott County. 6.3, Adopt Resolution Number 2023-180, approving an interim use permit for a detached accessory dwelling unit for Vladimir Shapilov, applicant and property owner. 6.4, Adopt Resolution Number 2023-206, approving the findings of fact and conclusion for the environmental assessment worksheet and a negative declaration on the need for an environmental impact statement for the Miranda Mine Expansion. 6.5, Adopt Resolution Number 2023-208, authorizing a master housing agreement with Scott Carver Dakota Cap Agency Incorporated. 6.6, Adopt Resolution Number 2023-216, approving estimates of just compensation. 6.6, adopt resolution number 2023-216, approving estimates of just compensation for right-of-way for the County Highway 59 and Trunk Highway 169 interchange project. 6.7, adopt resolution number 2023-222, authorizing a second budget amendment and final payment to Kramer North America LLC for the County Highway 17 Trail and Pedestrian Bridge Project in the city of Shakopee. 6.8, adopt resolution number 2023-225, authorizing an amendment to the agreement with WSB and Associates, Inc. for the Clear Lake Regional Park Campground Compliance Project. 6.9, adopt resolution number 2023-226, authorizing entering into an agreement with Great River Energy for the Trunk Highway 169 and County Highway 59 interchange project. 6.10, adopt resolution number 2023-227, authorizing entering into an agreement with Scott County Community Development Agency for the Marine Edition Housing Trust Project. 6.11, adopt resolution number 2023-228, approving 2024 preliminary levy of $1,417,065 for Scott Watershed Management Organization or WMO, WMO Special Taxing District. 6.12, adopt resolution number 2023-230, authorizing entering into an agreement with the City of Credit River for the County Highway 27 Bypass Lanes Project. 6.13, adopt resolution number 2023-231, authorizing entering into an intergovernmental aid agreement with the Shakopee Midwaketen Sioux Community. 6.14, adopt resolution number 2023-236, approving the 2024 budget in amount of $21,617,993 and payable tax levy in the amount of $4,576,308 of the Scott County Community Development Agency and certifying the same to the county auditor. 6.15, adopt resolution number 2023-238, authorizing a grant application for family and emergency housing options and acceptance of funds if awarded. 6.16, adopt resolution number 2023-239, amending the 2023 budget for utilization of American Rescue Plan Act funds and authorizing purchase of property at 212-214 Third Avenue West in the city of Shakopee. 6.17, adopt resolution number 2023-240, mending resolution number 2023-2, appointing commissioners and other county officials to boards and committees for 2023. 6.18, approve the one-to-four-day temporary on sale liquor license for the Scott County Agricultural Society in St. Lawrence Township. 6.19, approve payroll processing of personnel actions. And 6.20, approve record of dispersments and approve claims. Those are the 20 items on consent. Are there any you'd like to have polled for discussion, explanation? Commissioner Brennan?
I just want to make a comment on, um, number 614 regarding the CDA budget and, and levy request. And I appreciate the conversations that the, um, commissioners had at the workshop and also the work that the CDA did, um, to present that budget.
Okay.
So if nobody else has anything?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second, and then I have some comments.
Okay, second, uh, go ahead, Commissioner Brennan.
Uh, I just want to acknowledge we got some folks in the room on 6.14, and then, uh, Steve from the Shakopee Midwaketen Sioux Community. We appreciate all the work on both of those things. It's nice of you to come, even though it sounds like it might pass on consent.
Yep. Okay. Any others? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all, so. Thank you for coming in.
Yeah. You'd rather have it go this way, right? See you later.
Okay, we're going to move to 7.1, and that is to adopt resolution number 2023-039, establishing a maximum proposed levy of $91,600,957, less $8,59,557 certified property tax aids for net levy of $83,541,400 for the purpose of preparing the 2024 proposed property tax statements. And I see we have Danny Lenz. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you doing today?
Good, good.
We are here to adopt the preliminary levy. Uh, just a reminder that this preliminary levy and the action you take today sets the maximum levy for, uh, the 2024 budget at this point in the year. Um, after the board adopts the preliminary levy, the levy can only come down from this point overall. So what we're going to highlight today is the proposed budget, including the current budget status and key impacts. Go over very briefly the budget requests that we had from the organization, look at our financial forecast, and then some, um, graphics on the impacts to residents from the proposed levy. So just to kind of remind you all and, uh, those listening that the board has had long consistent, uh, budget policy and direction for the organization. That includes providing long-term fiscal stability while minimizing tax impacts, maintaining a reasonable level and constant tax burden, focusing on modeling limited and relatively level increases, and managing limited resources over unlimited demands, and provide the level of services necessary to meet mandates and citizen expectations. And what maintaining fiscal stability means to us is maintaining a structurally balanced budget, which means both the fiscal side as well as the service provisions, um, that our citizens need, as well as the needs of employees in order to provide those services, marrying that all with state mandates and requirements. Maintaining our county's reserves or our fund balance, maintaining the county's bond rating, planning and preparing for the future, and not spiking the levy and trying to limit or having those surprises within our process. So we did take a little bit of a different approach as we went through the budget preparation with the board this year. Um, we did have department budget presentations, which was similar to last year, but we had a different format and approach from last year. Um, the budget books were updated, providing the detailed information that we saw last year, uh, but we did not go through it accounting unit by accounting unit in the same level of detail, really just highlighting the changes in the budget requested in that process, and really focused on what we're calling objective area groups and the summaries of what's going on in those areas, what were the, um, past year's challenges and successes, um, and then also looking out at the future of what we're trying to accomplish and how we're going to improve service delivery in the future. With the current budget status, um, for the first time in several years, our revenues are projected to increase pretty significantly, a more than 7% increase when we're looking across the organization. Um, the revenue is largely specific to programs, um, and they're also not consistent across all programs, and some places come with spending increased expectations or needs. Um, we do expect additional revenue as state agencies apply new legislation and update their numbers. Um, our expenditure increases are in line with projections. Contractual increases, software licensing and maintenance costs continue to have an impact on the budget as, um, the model for how these software vendors continues to change and include just annual increases within their operating modules. Um, the new budget increases that were requested were fairly limited. Um, our past decisions continue to impact the future budgets, though, as we feather in ARPA-funded positions as well as some positions from, um, outside of ARPA funding. Um, and then we do have additional state aid covering necessary increases in highway operations within here. Uh, we do have a continued pressure from previous general revenue and expenditure budget changes, um, that does limit excess budget capacity within the budget, and right now we are looking at a 3.99% levy increase, um, based on the current budget status. Um, but as I was looking into, we do expect that to go down before we have the final levy. So the budget does rely heavily on increased transportation funding. Um, there was significant legislation this year in the road and bridge levy. We do expect to go down by about 1.5 million, um, offsetting some costs within the levy overall, um, with that increased transportation funding. And then we are going to shift some additional operating levy, um, onto additional state aid that we received in our operating budget for, uh, transportation. We also do assume the CCBHC is going to be generating revenue in excess of the additional expenses required to the tune of about $550,000, um, but we're also waiting on revenues from several HHS program areas, um, new public health funding, uh, adult protective services, and there's potential increases for school-linked mental health and coordinated response, um, that we're also waiting to hear about this fall. The budget does include the new community corrections funding, um, and again, the revenue changes will likely change HHS program revenue further, uh, we just don't know where all that's going to be. We are currently not including any of the county program aid increase that was part of the state legislative budget. Um, we do have some concerns for the viability of that after 2025, um, and actually, right now, we're using it and transferring it to the CIP fund balance, and it's really going to, um, cover costs for the ERP project and provide funding for our LATG replacement project that's coming up and currently, um, underway. And again, I just want to reiterate, we do expect that final levy to be lower than the preliminary levy that we're proposing today. So expenditures, and I'm not going to go through all of this, but some of the largest ones that are impacting the budget, um, is again salary increases per our bargaining unit agreements. Um, we also, in our forecast, have ticked up our health insurance increase, and for this year, we're looking at a 5% increase in there. Um, again, one of the biggest impacts we have overall is those contractual and licensing cost increases that are part of either the service provisions, um, or that software packages we use at over $800,000. Um, we talked about past decisions impacting this budget. We have $171,000 in ARPA position feathering that is part of this budget, um, as well as $82,000 in 2022 position feathering as well. The veteran courts' loss of funding is impacting us to the tune of about $142,000 within this budget. Library materials is another one where we had $100,000 increase, but, um, we do expect an increase to the MELSA budget in the tune of $90,000 to help offset that. Um, and then one position that is hitting a levy is a digital experience position in our administration, or Transformation Enterprise Services Division, um, really a communication function that we feel has been long needed in the organization. Um, for most of the rest of these requests, it's really operating, um, increases within services, whether it's, um, body cameras in the jail, um, interview room cameras, advertising for the increased position turnovers we have, those sort of operational needs we've been seeing kind of grow within the organization. Um, we do have some significant increases to our highway operations, uh, but these are all being covered by the increase to state aid we receive as part of that transportation funding. Um, and really, the trend on all of these areas, we've seen increasing costs over years with a budget that has stayed largely flat over this time. Um, and so with those increased costs, the increased road capacity, um, this is getting us up to a place where we feel like we can continue to maintain our roadways in the way we've been able to in the past, um, as those costs have increased overall. We did have some unfunded budget requests, um, one for a 911 dispatch position. We're currently doing a staffing study in this area and want to wait for the results of that before proposing any positions moving forward, um, as well as a deputy emergency management director, and we're really looking to, um, what is our succession planning in that area, as well as, um, hopefully some relationships with Hennepin County that can all let, allow some alleviation of pressure in this area overall with our communication 911 functions there, and want to see how that comes through. We did get a request for a veteran service officer that we're not proposing at this time. Um, we're really looking at some more data in terms of capacity in that, uh, unit, as well as this is seen as an expansion of services, not a negative expansion of services at this time, but one that we didn't bring forward. Um, the same thing with a halftime program specialist, uh, bringing it up to full-time, and really, this is about, um, trying to provide more services internally, um, and trying to look at different opportunities in order to address those needs from within the organization. Um, then a $10,000 increase in noxious wheat funding, this was again, uh, reviewed as an expansion of service and a little bit into an area that wasn't the responsibility of the county. It's a good program, it's an important program, but it's really not the county's responsibility within this area, um, to take on this role. So looking at our financial modeling, um, we go out five years in our financial forecast, the next upcoming budget year plus four additional years. Um, within that financial forecast, we are currently projecting just 1% revenue growth. My hope is, is that gets, looks better as we get through 25 to 28 with some of the new legislation, but really need to see how that plays out, especially when we look across the overall budget. If we have specific areas that have those bigger increases, it may not be as much offset in those other areas that have typically supported us with larger revenue increases. Excuse me. Again, we have salary increases per union contracts and then modeling forward a few years where we expect. Um, we did increase in the forecast 5% health insurance increases throughout it. Um, we've typically been at 3% within our modeling, but we've seen that ticking up over the past couple of years as we've seen those health insurances for the next budget year go up, um, and wanted to make sure we're modeling those costs appropriately in the future. We do include a $300,000 increase in the CIP levy through 2027. It is not in the 2028 fiscal year, as we believe we're fully funded at that point, based on the current decisions and what we have within there. Uh, we are really seeing an increase in costs as we go through these things. Fleet costs have been going up even when we can get the vehicles, um, among other projects. So this is really trying to keep us with our plan that's already been in place. Um, we also do have a $200,000 increase in the transfer to fund balance each year within the forecast that we've been budgeting as, um, our operating budget's been going up. Um, our fund balance hasn't been keeping up, especially as we've taken out that kind of wiggle room within the budget, um, in order to keep levies lower in the past few years. It does include ARPA-funded, uh, project feathering in the positions, as well as 2022 position feathering. Um, and then I do want to highlight that the parks plan that we've had, it was a 10-year plan with $100,000 increases each year over those 10 years, is going to be fully funded in 2027, which is actually four years ahead of schedule. So this is actually going to mean about, uh, $477,500 that is not going to be needed in future levy increases after 2027. Um, so we're taking that out, this is the first year you'll see that out of the model. And just looking from '27 to 2031, which was the end of the 10-year plan, that equates to $1.38 million in tax levy savings that we're not going to need to levy. And that's largely accomplished because we were able to move those projects forward earlier because of the ARPA funding. Um, and that's really to the benefit of the residents of the county, both that they get these beautiful parks up and running, as well as the levy savings that happens because of it. So looking at that forecast, again, we have the CIP fund bounce and parks in there. Um, for 2025, we're also looking at the Family Resource Center, how do we sustain support for that, kind of modeling that out. Hopefully, other funds become available, but we want to make sure we're planning for those costs. Um, the ARPA feathering and a $400,000, and really, um, that's the big year where those, any positions that are remaining have to come off that ARPA funds and move on to county levy. And with the last year of 2022 position feathering, but we also are planning on using additional $500,000 in road and bridge levy reduction. Again, this is kind of us feathering that revenue in over time, hoping that there's no additional changes to this legislation that is benefiting our, um, road programs. In 2026, some of the big additions are almost $250,000 for the family leave legislation that will have to be implemented in that time. Um, we're planning on a $150,000 Microsoft enterprise agreement increase, that's just based on what we've been seeing over the past few years, that hits all at one time, and so it's a big catch-up year, as well as $100,000 for our ERP licensing increase. And again, anticipating another $500,000 in the road and bridge levy reduction within there. 2027, um, again, you'll see the last year of the parks funding, it's gone from $100,000 down to $22,500 based on, um, our operating estimates. We also have bringing well ministries, um, onto the levy if the data supports that justification, as well as the, uh, past program for ed neglect if data supports, and the parents' teachers' program. Those are all ARPA-funded projects, but because they're contracts or obligations, they can extend out through 2026, so this would be the first year of them coming onto our levy. Uh, we also have library open access funding within there, and then we're anticipating the loss of the community corrections fee revenue. Hopefully, this will be something that can be addressed legislatively, um, but at this time, we want to make sure we're planning for that in the future. And then 2028, which is a, uh, change as we looked in our forecast, um, we have the $200,000 in fund balance, but we also have $2 million in our debt service levy that is going to be falling off in 2028. Um, so as we put together our, uh, debt service program for these buildings, we anticipated debt service falling off, um, in 2028 and then out into the future. We're moving that money into our CIP, um, as the plan that we had at the time was to utilize any debt service savings to start building up funds, um, within our building program. So as we need to do major renovations, um, if there's a need for a new building, we could avoid, uh, what we could do with not having to go out to issue more debt. Uh, if we look across the street, we already know our LEC is starting to be about 20 years old and starting to have some more major repairs, and so this has kind of been the plan, um, at least since I arrived and we issued this debt, to shift this money into our building improvement program. So looking at our financial forecast from a graphical representation, we have the blue line, which is the percentage increase in our levy. So at 3.99%, um, still modeling higher costs out in the future, largely driven by those lower revenue, uh, projections, but also being impacted by the ARPA funding going away and being brought back onto the levy. Um, we have our red line, which is the actual levy dollars that we have within the financial forecast. And then the green line is the percentage of taxable market value, um, that the county, uh, brings in in tax levy support, um, which is our closest kind of leading indicator of what is the tax rate, or what is the tax amount that the county is, um, taxing our residents. And this is one that we always want to see trending down in our forecast. Um, so just show that we're taking less of the percent, or the value of the property taxes into our levy to support our operations. You can see, um, we are reducing pretty substantially, um, from 2023 to 2024, going point from .367 to .313% of the taxable market value. And then our operating budget and fund balance, um, again, the yellow line there is the overall operating budget for the county. The red line is our fund balance in dollar amounts. Um, the blue line is our percentage of coverage of fund balance. So you take our fund balance, the red line, divide it by the yellow line, that gives us the blue line, so that's the percentage of our operating budget, um, that is in unencumbered funds that we can cover. And then that green line shows what the lowest point we're going to be at any point during the year of how much fund balance we have available. Um, so when we get our first tax payment in May, and we're having to cover all of the payroll and salaries, grants, everything else up to that time, we might get down to about 10% coverage of our operating budget. coverage of our operating budget. So we always want that line to stay above 5% in those out years to make sure that we have enough to meet our operating obligations within the fund balance here. And then when we look at setting our budget, we always keep in mind it's not a hard rule, but it's something we identify as what is the new construction inflation. When we combine those things, we always want that levy or want to try and have that levy be lower than that. So our CPI was 3.0% increase year over year, and this is when we look at the numbers released in July. A new construction percentage change went by 1.67%. So 4.67% is the number we kind of target to stay below. As I said, we're proposing a 3.99% preliminary levy. Looking at the impact to residents, with this current 3.99% tax levy, 74% of residents are going to see a tax decrease this year between $10 and $50, with the majority of them are going to be within that number. In addition, when we look at the average property, so if you look at this on the left side is the average property, the average residential property, that bottom number of $437,000, that's the average residential property for 2024. The one above it is for 2023. The $300,000 is for 2019, so five years ago, and $245,000 is 10 years ago. The average residential property is going to see a tax decrease of about $20. Even if you look back of the $439,000 average home from last year, they will also see a $20 decrease if their property value stayed the same. So 74% of our residents seeing that decrease, the average home is going to see a $20 decrease in their taxes. And then our 10-year tax rate, again, our tax rate is going down. This has been a trend that we've had for some time, going from 26.6% to 26.1% is our projected final tax rate for this year. So next steps, we have our final department budget presentation today following the board meeting for adult services. November 17th is our board planning workshop, and that's our final kind of workshop setting to discuss the budget and provide staff direction for what we're going to have at our budget presentation, which is going to occur on December 7th. This is the presentation where the public is invited to comment on the budget. I'll present, and then the large number of speakers will talk after me. And then December 19th, we adopt the final levy and the budget. So with that, staff recommends the board adopt resolution number 2023-039, establishing a maximum proposed levy of $91,600,957, less $8,59,557 certified property tax aids for a net levy of $83,541,400 for the purpose of preparing the 2024 proposed property tax statements. Now, if there's any questions, commissioners?
First of all, I would just say there's that December 7th, you know, that's when the public can come say something. If somebody's listening now and wants to call any of us up, call us up now and tell us, you know, look at it. You don't like something, let us know. But yeah, they can call us anytime on that before that. So any other questions? Is it again? Any other questions or comments or? If not.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of the resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Ulrich. Is there a second?
Second.
And there is a second. Thank you. Any other discussion? Commissioner Beer?
Preliminary.
Preliminary?
That's all I have.
Okay. So I see he's got his axe packed down here. Okay, if there's no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Danny.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, with that, we are going to move on to commissioner updating committee reports. Let's go to Commissioner Beer. Sitting right there in front of you.
Wow, wow, good thing I was ready, huh? All right, nine, five, I think we were all at the post-board workshop. On the sixth, I was, I think I was the lone holdout, not holdout, crazy. I had coffee with comms, that's what we call it, coffee with comms. Communications, I'm excited. We have this new focus on communications and being better at telling our own stories. So it was a good, a good.
Good day.
Yes, it was, it was. Let's see, on the eighth, we had scale, oh, sorry, on the sixth, Three Rivers, we were all at the joint Three Rivers Board out at Cedar Lake and saw some pretty amazing camper cabins, solid construction, looked great, built by our students that we had at scale, which I'll talk about that, I guess, next. What a great opportunity that's going to be, a county that's thinking outside the box, but these boxes look really good and you want to be inside these in inclement weather, which it can be in the winter, insulated and heated. So Cedar Lake, what are the reservations going to be on my end of the year when they can, for next year? Yeah, so they won't be, they're not available now unless you're squatting, which we don't want you to do that, so next year. On the eighth was scaled, that we had them come and talk about that, that was part of it. Let someone else talk more about that. And on the 12th, labor meeting, also on the 12th, Scott County Prevention Coalition, 13th, MESB. On the 14th, had a fun opportunity to speak at the library staff day. Yes, I said fun opportunity to speak at the library staff day. I don't spend enough time at the library. So was it just a conversation, free-flowing and hopefully unending, and happy to have more conversations as the days go by. Let's see, on the 18th, I had coffee with some of the folks at Hart and talked to those fellows for a while, and I was not at Heartland, so I saved some money, which was good. Always fun to see what they're dreaming about, and they are dreaming good things. And last night, Prior Lake Workshop, many of us were here to talk about the opportunity for the Family Homelessness Initiative up there at SOL, or what are we calling it? Where's Chris? Solo or Lakes, I think they want to rebrand for Solo. But for families moving through, dealing with homelessness, not in the long term, but something to get them on, give them a runway to launch. So more to come on that. And then right after that workshop, the city had adopted their preliminary levy of 11.81%, much to do with the full-time fire and other things. So that, with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Brennan?
Thank you, I'm ready. I got up early and wrote my notes down, so I'm prepared. September 6th was a tour of the camper cabins that Commissioner Beer just spoke about. September 7th, I had a meeting with Julie Seagirt from the CDA. September 8th, with scale, I had my monthly meeting with Administrator Vermillion, and I attended the City of Shakopee TAP 2023 dinner, which was supporting the entrepreneur program for their EDA. And Craig, Senator Pratt, the school district, the county, the CDA, and the SMSC were all in attendance and supported that program. September 12th was the CDA building, or meeting, they approved their operating budget and tax levy. They approved Homeland Trust, the purchase of Homeland Trust property in Savage. The CDA was grateful for the affordable housing funding from the county. September 13th, Scott County Historical Society meeting. The executive director job posting is now available to take a look at and apply for. So if any of the commissioners would like to apply for the executive director position at the Historical Society, that job description is on their website. The strategic planning workshop is scheduled for the end of the month. They are also going to work with the Career Force Center to find a part-time, very part-time person to work on Saturdays. I went to the AMC conference on September 14th, and I attended the General Government and Taxes Committee meetings. I think the biggest priorities coming out of there is the tax forfeiture that we would just have been discussing. Also, money for the elections is also going to be a top priority for that committee. September 18th, last night, I took a tour of the soil and water conservation projects that was hosted by the Scott County Soil and Water and the Scott County WML. Projects reflected partnerships between those organizations and the Prior Lake, Spring Lake watershed district. It was very interesting to see the variety of projects that they're doing from water and soil. And this morning, I had a meeting with HHS.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Brennan. Commissioner Ulrich?
My report will be quite brief because I was on vacation for much of the period we're talking about, but I do want to make a comment on the camper cabins. They're so exciting. And Steve McClellan from Jordan and Brent Caulfield from Shakopee and Adam Justin from Scott County all seemed very jazzed about it, you know, and the kids very excited about it. Incredible opportunity for them to learn skills in a category where we said we're struggling in society for people that want to go into the things like carpentry or electrician or, you know, the trades. And so this is quite an opportunity. And you could tell that they really were hoping, I'm reading between the lines, that this wasn't one and done, that this just wasn't a single year's effort. And I'm going to couple my comments with the Three Rivers Board meeting, you know, and they stated the revenue would be X from these four cabins, you know, it would be a certain amount. I'm hoping that with a, with a sharp pencil, our financial people can figure out how many would fund a full-time position? How many cabins would it be, four or five? And what would we need to charge to fund a full-time park position? Because every time you add a amenity, you know, you're talking, well, okay, now we have to have the staff to pair with it. But this is a revenue razor, so it seems to me, you know, that you should be able to come up with a calculation that would say if we were to put some at Doyle or some at Clary, this would be how many it would be, and it would really fund a position. So you'd get the benefit of funding a position. And I think, you know, we should explore the idea of continuing with the kids right now and store them somewhere until we're ready. We don't necessarily have to put them right on a, may not be ready for a Clary or a Doyle, but, you know, it takes a while to do these. And if you said you wanted some, you know, you might want to store them. So I'm just giving a little push here on building a store, keeping this opportunity going, and then also the idea that they should be able to, with a one-time expenditure, create a revenue source for staffers. And if it isn't entire, which I think it should be based on what the way I look at it, you know, you're not competing directly against what, another park system. What you're saying is this cost is for the experience, this is how much it is, and if you want this experience, it's going to cost this. And the costs are fairly low for these camper cabins. And, you know, you could predict that at least through the summer, these are going to be booked solid. There's just no question. And I would think fall, and I mean, year-round, you're going to have a really high occupants in these. So if you're, you know, five or $10 more than somebody else, you know, big deal. It's not a big deal if you needed that to create a funding source. Okay, I've gone overboard on the point. But anyhow, okay, RTF, oh, there was the scale meeting, and then we talked about the camper cabins and then the coordinated response program. But after that was the RTF. And with the RTF, we're, Chris is gathering information, he's having focus groups of law enforcement, focus groups of fire folks, and working through the process of what should our training center look like in the future. The next decision that's going to come in the next couple of months is would something in the future remain at our current location or could it be somewhere else? That's just a sort of a guardrail, sort of a concrete piece of information. You could say it's moving somewhere else is going to be a nonstarter, or there's possibility. That decision probably, we should probably have that by November, the decision of could whatever's future be somewhere else where it's current? And if it's the current, then that puts a lot of things in place that you want to begin to work. And he's going to put together a group of law enforcement and fire folks to really work on this and come up with a concept plan of what a training center would look like in the future. But in the meantime, he's doing everything to keep it vibrant, it's heavily used, it's even a Carver County that said they were going to withdraw as a member are now coming back with 25 dates that they want to book. It's like, that's probably going to be more expensive as a non-member now. I mean, you know, it's just, yeah. So, yeah, so those are some of the things that are going on there. Oh, one thing that's really cool, scheduling is not as easy as it might seem, you know, because you've got, a police department, for example, has all these different shifts and all these different officers, all their different schedule, so it's complicated. And so we've got a new scheduling software that was really inexpensive, but it's very adaptable and it's in place and it'll make it really slick for all these jurisdictions to schedule. They can see on a calendar, they can see an overview, they can book by rooms, and as they book, they know the exact cost, it totals up the cost as they're booking, and it's fabulous. That's the end of my report.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Breckie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. September 5th, board workshop we all attended. September 6th, I attended a celebration in Jordan with federal and state officials in the city of Jordan to just celebrate the funding for the 169, 282, 9 project. Some community folks came, Representative Craig was there, Senator Klobuchar appeared remotely, so it was nice to have a real positive time on that project because we know there's been lots of, lots of work and for a lot of years. So that was good. Also, that day, I also attended the joint board meeting with Three Rivers Park District and saw the camper cabins. September 7th was my monthly meeting with County Administrator Leslie Vermillion. Also on that day was the Justice Steering Committee meeting. On September 8th was the scale general membership meeting and ditto on the cabins and how great it was in that presentation. The coordinated response presentation, want to thank Chris for organizing that and facilitating it. I will say that I heard from a couple of people and especially the city administrator of Shakopee who said he thought that was the best scale presentation initiative that we've ever had. So it was well-received and that was good to hear. Also, on September 8th, I attended the same dinner that Jody did, the city of Shakopee, Shakopee EDA, the dinner before Tap Fest. It was great to hear from some of those entrepreneurs that were there. It was a beautiful evening at the landing. It reminded me of what a nice resource that is for events. September 12th was the CAP monthly board meeting. September 13th, I had AMC board meeting and also MICA board meeting. And the 13th, 14th, and 15th, I was at the AMC Policy Conference also. You heard me talk about the great job that one of our parents from our Family Resource Center did on a panel there. And I participated in the Health and Human Services Committee. I think the top priorities coming out of that committee are really going to be mental health beds for high-acuity folks, you know, those folks that are stuck at the state hospital or some of the children we're finding around the state who are living in hotels with county staff members because there's no other place for them. So it's really going to be our push with the legislature, with DHS. I talked about making some posters saying build more beds, and I will try not to swear on there, and just walking around the Capitol every day, all day, because I personally don't think we need to spend another cent on another study or task force or group or anything on this. We just need the state to build beds because they're not going to happen tomorrow, and we have this need. So that'll be one of the top priorities. And then some of the modernization on the systems. Of course, the legislature gave a couple hundred million dollars to DHS to work on this last year, and as counties, we're not real happy with how that work is progressing, what some of that spending's going on, going to. So those will probably be the priorities of that committee. Also, on September 15th, had AMC Finance Committee meeting and then a meeting for the NACO Human Services and Education Committee. On September 18th, I think that was yesterday, I met with George Brewston from Guild, making a couple of connections. George is going to work with some of their staff at Guild to connect them with Jody Stone and the students downstairs to give another example of human services job opportunities from that nonprofit standpoint, which I think will be good for those kids. Yesterday, also attended most of the Scott County Soil and Water Conservation Natural Resources Tour, ditto to what Commissioner Brennan said. I think it's, for those who haven't been on that tour, it's just really good to see some projects that support agriculture and agricultural industry, but also then some projects that really support our residences in the rural areas who have large acreage and don't know what to do with those acres. Let's do things with it that helps the surrounding watershed and everybody else. So it was good to see that variety of projects. And then last evening, also attended most of the Prior Lake City Council Workshop. And this morning, I had our monthly meeting with Arbdal Health and Human Services. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you for my report, the workshop on the 5th. That evening, New Market Township had their monthly meeting. Next day, the 6th, the MMCD, where we do have a person that we're going to offer the executive director position to. And so because of that, I missed the camper cabin thing, which I really want to see. On the 7th, I was with Soil and Water, Troy Coop, following particular on two and 13 for three, three hours. So if you think you saw me, that's where I was. The labyrinth of tunnels underneath that road and the direction the water flows out there is, it's crazy. So they have water problems out there, even though I don't think we've had three inches of rain since May. Then on the 8th, the scale meeting, and then, then we had the Shakopee had their, like, I don't think called it a beer or something. Anyhow, that was a, I thought that was a great event. I met the administrator of the hospital over there for St. Francis and had a nice discussion. Met with the administration staff about some things on the 11th, and then planning and zoning after that. The M E S B on the 13th, on the 14th, I-35 Solutions met. There was an engineer from MnDOT that gave a great presentation on the 494 I-35 and the whole corridor and the whole, the timing, the, it was, it was really pretty good. If you get a chance to go onto the I-35 solutions, if you're concerned about that stuff and when they're going to close things, and there's just a lot of things that go into, if you have just a single road closure and how they have to detour, and I mean, there's, we've known all that, but it's a lot for that area. So met with, that afternoon, with the New Market Township Board Chair on a couple of roads that they share with Cedar Lake Township, particular two and John Quill, and one side's owned by Cedar Lake, one's by New Market Township. And, I mean, they have somebody mowing one half and then going home and doing the other, not, nothing, not doing it. And the other guy has to come and do his. And so, but they cannot come to an agreement at this point on who gets one nickel more of a benefit. So anyhow. Then Elko, New Market, and Spring Lake Township that evening. Spring Lake is talking about, I think, a 13% levy increase. Then on the 18th, yesterday, the Soil and Water Conservation Tour, the Prior Lakes Transition Housing, Credit River had their levy. They're looking at about 20%. A lot of that's the fire department. They're going to have some growing pains with getting a city hall, you know, and maybe a planner, you know, just some other things. It's going to cost money. And I live out there, and so it's going to cost more. And there was a ditch meeting last night out at New Market Township. They have a ditch that we'd kind of like to abandon or something. But anyhow. Then also yesterday, number of phone calls about there was an accident on two and 35, and we're looking at, we've, we've been looking at it, and that's, I mean, that's something that's on our radar heavily. And so if we could do something about fixing that up and making it safer, we will. But in the meantime, stop at the stop sign. I think that would be the best and wait for the guy to go by. So anyhow, yes, Commissioner Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I forgot to say something about the last two weekends where community celebrations, Hyman Fest in Jordan two weeks ago, this past weekend, Dozenki in New Prague. I was, was at both and volunteered in different capacities. But both were amazing. I think it's just, I just want to express appreciation to all the people, businesses, volunteers, and the cities who make those community celebrations come together because many thousands and thousands of people out interacting, doing good activities together. A lot of families and family-friendly things going on in those two communities the last two weeks. So kudos to all who made that happen.
Yep. So when I was at the St. John's Festival, and the same thing, I actually went to bid on a quilt that I thought I was going to get for 400 bucks and $900 later, someone else got it. So anyhow, that is my report.
It's very warm, too, by the way.
It actually was, it was nice. Anyhow, but it got crazy. Leslie, anything to report?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple things and follow-up to your two and 13. Joe has been out there as well as Megan, and they're doing some checking on that. So I would expect to report back on some thoughts on that and then that too distant future and how it's draining and why. So they are following up on that request. Two and 35, we took multiple calls yesterday. Just a reminder, MnDOT holds the jurisdiction of those intersections, and the county has proposed a couple things that we could potentially do as intermittent, and they have not supported those at this point. So they are the ultimate jurisdiction. They get to make the decision, and they will make the final call on what we're able to do out there. So we've been supportive of a couple ideas. We've thrown some things out there, but at this point, they have not made that decision. We are going to be changing our area manager again down here. Ryan is moving to the Western Metro. And so that'll be a change, probably take a little bit to get caught up. And then I just think the data that's being used needs to be looked at very carefully there by MnDOT. So we are working on that. We're supportive. Tony has done a good job, I think, responding to calls. And we've also forwarded those calls on to the Department of Transportation. The other thing is, is that I want to thank Brad and Tony and Lisa and Mark Renfest. Last year at this time, we were having one complaint fest after another. My observation of what Brad provided me this weekend was the numbers were up, they had good attendance, the buses were on time, there weren't complaints of long lines. And thanks to Sheriff's Office for some drone footage, but there appeared to be no major backups on any of the county highways or MnDOT highways. So having that professional parking, I think, which they've been talked about for years, and a transit plan in place appears to be making a difference. So kudos to these guys because I think it has helped the public and the transportation there, and they put a lot of time into that.
Yep. And a thank you from, especially Barb and I, that we're not fielding all those phone calls, especially Barb.
And visits, knocks on the door.
I can't get home. Anyhow. Ron, is there a reason for us to adjourn?
Excuse me. Before I get to that, I'd just like to mention another community event happened a couple Saturdays ago that I attended and spoke at in Jordan, Sutton Ridge Farms, at their fourth annual Military Appreciation Day, which is very well-attended. It was nice to see a lot of veterans and active-duty military people out there with their families. It was a great event. If you ever get a chance to attend that, I would encourage it. Also, Mr. Chair, last time, we had a board meeting. You asked, you asked me about the Choose Not to Use fundraiser, which, which, which we had a couple weeks ago at the Legends in Prior Lake. So I can report the, our net profit from that was just under $86,000. So that will be used to.
Wow, pretty good.
Educate our youth in Scott County, hopefully make the best choices in life and study from drugs and alcohol and that kind of, that kind of thing. And we're in talks with New Prague and Prior Lake Savage School Districts on implementing programs in those areas, which we've been working on. Prior Lake Savage for quite a few years, and in addition to Shakopee, so they're next. So we'll keep working on that. With that said, I think that was it. We do not need to meet.
Okay. Thank you. After this, we are going to have a workshop in the next room here. So I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
In a second. Thank you both. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned. Okay. Here's, here's.